Heavenly Father, thank you this day. Thank you for all your blessings, Lord. We just ask that you be with us as we make decisions for the town. And, Lord, we just ask that you be with those of our town, that we could always be united and grow your town the way you'd like us to do it. And, Lord, we just ask that you be with all the council members and all the, our staff, that we'd be, have the wisdom to do this. And, Lord, we just ask you, all this in your name and for your sake. Amen.
I have the pleasure of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any presentation?
No presentation.
Okay. Okay, we'll open the floor to citizen comments. This is only for citizens of the town, and we will go by what our rules and regulations say will be for the citizens of the town. Ms. Quinn has given us a package, and I hope everybody has that package, and we'll take that and look it over. First one up is Gordon Erickson.
Gordon Erickson, 151 Cameron Street. Sir, I'd like to, a couple of things I'd like to talk to you about tonight. First, I want to tell you that our maintenance team and sanitation, I think, are doing a wonderful job. I see them out here in this part of the town. Every, you know, they come over here in uniforms, look good, smile, wave at people, great, doing a wonderful job. I'm concerned about Travis on the sanitation side for safety and the rules when we put out with the new trash cans. We weren't going to pick up trash cans with lids open, and I saw him trying to empty one here just this week, and I couldn't catch him. I told him, I was going to tell him to leave it. I don't know if there was water in there, but those things get really heavy. I don't know if you ever moved one that has water in it. Plus, you know, there could be animals in there. I just think we ought to follow the rules. When it says the lid's supposed to be closed, just leave them closed, because pretty soon you're going to have trash on the ground. We pick that up, don't pick it up. That's the first thing, I want to just let you know what's going on. These, the CCI, I guess, the zoning, the people go around and do the code. I know they're only four hours a week, but I'd like to see them concentrate more on the problems in our town. Go up here on Walker with a tree, something, the sidewalk's been there for, I don't know how many months. Right down the street here, we got, First House has six trash cans out there. One of them's the town's, just been sitting there year after year. I'd like to see that up. On Yen Stone, Montgomery, there's a tree that's down, but part of it's cut. You can't, you've got to kind of zigzag through when you're out walking, if you're out walking a dog or something, just, it's not picked up. I'd like to see that the county do the inspection on homes. They do a fine job, and if they're not doing a good job, then report it to the state or somebody and get it fixed. We shouldn't pass that on. But if we have a limited budget, I'd really like to see our inspectors go out there and see what's wrong. Maybe possibly Patrick or Jennifer can get a spreadsheet and show when they ticket somebody, if they write a citation, I'd like to see it. I'd like to know what, if, they work on Thursdays, four hours. If he gives somebody, hey, your yard needs to be cleaned up, I think there'll be some follow-through. I think the town deserves to know what they're doing and what they wrote up that day. A spreadsheet simple due that we could get onto town. The last thing I want to talk to you about was, I'm the chairperson of the zoning board. I know you have, you're going to have a new person come in tonight, or you're going to nominate somebody. I hope you talk to the individual. Our attendance is poor. We've had three meetings. We've only had like four people show up, which means that if one person doesn't, you know, votes against it, it gets shot down. And I don't think it's fair to our town, the residents, you know, your constituents. You know, I think it'll be like a bigger majority to listen to it, ask questions, and maybe it does need to be disapproved. I'm not saying it has to be approved or disproved. I just think with four people, they're not, the people aren't getting the fair representation of what they deserve when they bring this problem forward that they're trying to do, because if it doesn't get approved at, you know, this level, then they all, they've got to go to state court. So, I'd like to see, and the board members we have, we all nominate people, maybe talk to them about their attendance. They're not showing up. We've had three meetings, and only like four is it. I'm pretty sure that Patrick or Jennifer can verify that for you. So I'd just like to see, you know, maybe somebody wants to be replaced. If they don't, they don't, they're not interested in helping the community, just step down. Find somebody who is. I know it's hard to do. I've talked to Tom about it recently, you know, about it's hard to get somebody to volunteer, but I just thought you ought to know that this poor attendance, maybe you guys can do something about it. I don't know if you have a question for me. If you don't, that's all I had.
Okay. We sure do appreciate it. We're taking it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Need approval of the minutes, June 26, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes, June 26, 2025.
Need a second.
Second.
You're not a member, you're not a citizen of the town, are you?
I have property in the town, and I've spoken at every meeting prior.
Yes, yes, that's right. And you're not a member of the town, you're a citizen of the town. We're going by our rules and regulations tonight. We allowed you, we allowed you to speak the last time, and, you know, you know, we got you, we got your...
Does she own property in the town, in town limits? What address is the property?
421 Briarwood Drive.
So you own, you own town, you own property inside the town limits?
Yes, sir.
Then you have a right to talk.
Well, not, you know, we allowed her to speak because she had property in the town, but she's not a citizen of the town.
It wouldn't make any difference. If she owns property, she pays taxes. She pays taxes.
No, she, she...
She doesn't have to live at that property. If she owns property in the town, she pays taxes.
Why did we do that? Why did we take her?
She has the right to represent herself for the property she owns.
Let me speak. Why did we take her trash can and all the way? Because she wasn't a citizen.
That was, that was a decision that somebody else made. I didn't take her trash can away.
Okay.
She owns property within the town's limits. She has a right to speak on her tax, taxation. She pays property taxes in town.
Any corporation, any, any business that buys a lot in town would have...
Regardless, if you own property within the town's limits, you have a right to speak.
I think it's based on whether you can vote in the town. I think that's...
Then show me why it says you must live and your primary residence must be in this town.
I don't know.
It doesn't say that. If you own, if you own property within the town's limits, you have a right to speak at this council.
Citizen of the town.
I didn't have an issue with it. You brought it up as an issue last time.
You brought it up...
You brought it up as the issue last time.
You brought it up as the issue last time, that, you know, we shouldn't allow a citizen that's not a citizen of town, then...
What did I, what did I say last time?
We'd have to look at the video.
I brought it up as an issue. What was my specifics?
I'm not sure exactly.
I just brought it up, right? So, so the individual that I brought up last time didn't even live or own property in this town, so it's completely different, right?
No, he owns 10 feet of property in the town.
The point is, if you pay property taxes within the municipal limits, you should have a right to talk at this council meeting. That's the point.
Well, I didn't, I didn't take it as that.
What does the ordinance say? Do we have it handy?
Yeah, Section 2-58, appearance of citizens. Any citizen of the town may speak at a regular meeting on a matter pertaining to municipal services and operations, except personnel matters, by signing an agenda maintained by the clerk. Prior to the meeting, stating the subject and purpose for speaking, each person who gives notice may speak at time designated by the mayor and shall be limited to a three-minute presentation at the discretion of the mayor.
I don't mind saying that the only reason that, that I think she's being denied to speak is because they don't like what she's going to talk about. That's, that's my personal opinion. I firmly believe that. I think the only reason that, the only reason that the mayor and the other council person has an argument towards this is because they just don't like what she's got to say. And you know what? Criticism, criticism of this government is necessary, and I think it's, I think it's necessary at all times.
What did, what did, what did the ordinance say?
As I said, that was my handle.
I have the authority to let people to speak. You know, it's up to the mayor. And you can say, you can say what you want to. We've heard this, you know, and she gave us a package. We took the package, and we can study it over and get back with her on that.
That's, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's kind of your, your opinion, too.
Can I give you what I was going to say?
You can.
Because one of the lines in here is, I will not be bullied, and I will not be intimidated with her.
Okay, well, that's fine.
The first three people that spoke at the last meeting were not...
Is this even so, is her address Paklet, South Carolina? Is the address Paklet, South Carolina?
It's a postal address. There's resident, there's people that are in Cherokee County who have Paklet addresses.
But she lives on...
I was very supportive of letting them speak last time, and I don't like silencing people, but this is a slippery slope. If anyone that owns property in the town, I mean, you could have people that live...
It sounds like picking and choosing, and when we're...
No, we're not. Last time we allowed everybody, and this time we're not.
I, you know, I was, I was pounded last few, last week, last month, that I shouldn't allow people to speak out of, out of the limits of town. And that's what I made the decision on tonight, and that's what I'm going to hold. That's it. I'm sorry.
Those people are bad. She pays taxes in the town. Those people did not pay taxes in the city.
You allowed, you allowed many people last meeting to talk that did not live in the town.
Many of them, many of them is going in the town.
And you allowed those people to talk because they were in favor of your agenda?
No.
Tonight, you don't have any people in favor of your agenda, so you're refusing them to talk.
You're wrong again. You're, you're wrong again. I allowed them to speak because they wanted to speak.
Mr. Mayor, quick order. Ordinarily under operating procedures, Robert's rules of order, a member of council or a member of the city can yield their right to speak for three minutes to a non-member. Will this council entertain that there is a procedural procedure in place, that they can yield their three minutes, done all time in many councils across the country? Will this council consider a three-minute yield? If one of the council members can yield their time to a, to a citizen who does pay taxes? You're, you're wanting to hear about, about stuff that is going on in the community.
Okay, okay, I'm, okay, I'm...
We'll follow Robert's rules, and if Robert's rules said so, then we should allow it.
What, what time? We, we have unlimited time.
I would, I would certainly yield three minutes of time to, to the lady to speak.
But there's no time limit on council. What, what three minutes is, is a yield?
We don't have that in our ordinance or anything, Jason. You don't, you don't have it.
You just said, just a few minutes ago, that we follow Robert's rules. That's in Robert's rules. We follow Robert's rules.
It's procedural, it's a procedural...
Okay, listen, yes, that's an order. Come on up and speak. You know, we're going to let you speak, you know, but three minutes is it, you know, go ahead and speak. But then, you know, this is the last time, you know, I'm not going to allow, I'm not going to allow it again. You know, we've heard it, we won't allow you again to speak, you know, before. I've heard, I've heard it, and I've heard it, and I've heard it. You know, but that's it, you know.
It's democracy. You don't have that choice.
Okay, listen, listen, y'all listen. She's going to speak, three minutes.
Starting now, good evening. From the beginning, my concerns have been very clear, as if this wasn't a good example. First, I've never been opposed to a housing development. I'm not opposed to the town prospering. I am opposed to the specific plan of Mark III properties with 3.41 units per acre, 20 feet from my property line in Paklet. Second, most importantly, my concern is how the rezoning request and how this council, how this town runs its business. It is not transparent, it is disrespectful, and it's not in the public's best interest. When I ask questions, this is how I'm treated. It is not small-town leadership. I've been met with hostility, arrogance, silence, and roadblocks. I filed three FOIA requests. I've paid $154 to get documents that should be public. My most recent request was met with a response from the town attorney that was outside the 10-day limit, and he denied my request without cause. I also tried to speak with a developer, Mark III. Mr. Jay Beeson invited me after the fourth, but he's never followed through and ignored all requests. So how can I trust them to protect my property, my privacy? Let me be clear. I will not be intimidated. I will not be silent, and I will continue to speak up. I've supported this town for 35 years, but I am now viewed as a nuisance. I am now viewed negatively. And honestly, there is not one person sitting up there or out here or that can hear my voice that would not have acted in the same way, given the same conditions and position. Last month, Mr. Kay read an email. He referenced one of the more loud, more vocal residents of Briarwood. That was me. But you all had a choice of how to handle this, and you did not choose wisely. And now we're here. I have many questions that remain unanswered. Why did you, the council, zone this property industrial days, not even a whole week, days before the rezoning application was made? Why didn't you just deny it? Why did you not stand on what your planning committee said, what they said was in the best interest? I'm not here to fight. I'm not here to fight growth. I'm here to fight for transparency, accountability, and fairness for every resident. I know I'll be cut off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of June 26, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion's made in second. Any questions? Okay, need to vote. All in favor, approve minutes, 2026, 2025, I'm sorry. Okay, executive session regarding legal action and personnel, need a motion for that.
Just for clarification, who all voted in favor?
To what?
Just who, just, we couldn't see all the hands that were up there.
Okay, okay. All approve of the minutes.
We need a roll call if you'd, you asking for a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Wright, Mr. Bracken, it's not here, Ms. Sexton.
Yes.
Mr. Camby, Mr. Williams, Mr. Safer, Paul McGree, and Ms. Wofford. All, all present, voted in favor.
Need a motion to go in executive session regarding legal action and personnel.
You want to continue to read the reasons, which?
I'm sorry?
You need to notify the public while we go into executive session.
Okay, I did. Legal advice and personnel pursuant to SE Code 30-4-70, discuss the discussion of receipt of legal action where the legal advice relates to pending, threatening or potential claim of other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to Code 30-4-70, discussion of employee appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee or appointment to public body.
I make a motion to go to executive session.
Okay.
Motion made in second. All in favor? All opposed? And we'll go into executive session. Come back here. Got the meeting back in order. No action was taken in the executive session. We'll move on. Department reports. No, I don't have anybody.
Nope.
Okay.
Any questions regarding CCNI?
Yes, I do.
Sure.
On the, I guess, the spreadsheet or whatever we see here, everything is listed on here from the parcel to the address, the type, the company name, applicant, except for the permit fee that was charged.
You want that added on there?
Yes, please. I mean, we're given everything about what, how much the project cost and, and all that stuff. I think we should see what the permit fee is, because I, I can't go in and look and see and look up every one of these. I think it should be, it's stated as well as how much the permit fee was cost. And also, too, just refresh my memory, does CCI, they get a percentage of the permit fees?
When the permit fee is done, is, is a permit fee is charged, and of the cost of the permit fee, 80% of it stays with CCI, and the other 20% is written to the town at Paklet.
Okay. Is there a way we can see that as well? So we can see how much money is being paid out to CCI and I?
Sure.
Okay. And, and please add that to the spreadsheet, and if, and if this can be revised?
And added to the next...
And added to next month's meeting along...
Absolutely.
Along with August. I mean, September's. Well, August goes in the middle of it.
Anybody else on this? You, you, I mean, you, you good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I also wanted to know, so I, I had, I had emailed you, Patrick, about that. Architectural drawings for a, a small little building that, I don't understand, they, they ended up paying almost $500 for another set of drawings that was required by CCNI for a building that's only used for storage. I mean, you, you agree that's ridiculous, right?
So I, I talk, I got more information on this, and, and based on what I understand on there is that for it to be build, for it to be built, an engineer still has to design it.
And they had drawings. They actually, so they purchased the building from Coleman, the pastor up here at Brown's Chapel, and, and they purchased it specifically with drawings. So, so they had it, and they were, they had drawings and everything, but, but they weren't appropriate for what CCNI requested, so they had to, they had to get additional drawings that cost them another $500.
So my understanding on this is that most companies that he deals with, he's got several companies he works with, there's, there's some companies that have that, because the thing is, is I could open up a shed business, and I can design a shed. I'm not an engineer. I have no idea what I'm doing. But it needs to be designed by an engineer for load ratings and that sort of thing on there.
So a building that's not going to be lived in needs to be designed by an architectural engineer?
Has to be designed by an engineer to make sure that the fact that it's...
It's not going to be lived in?
Yes.
So a storage building...
That's state law.
So it needs to be designed by, by an architectural engineer or, or an engineer, even though it's not going to be lived in?
It's my understanding that's what the state law is.
No matter what, a storage building has to have an engineer-designed stamp, drawing?
Otherwise, I, I mean, I, I can go out and design it.
When they, when they started the process, so if anybody wants to get a small building, a metal building, or whatever, and they purchase it from a local building dealer, what they were told is, is they need to come town hall and get with you about a permit. So when they came here for the permit, you told them that they had to get special drawings, correct?
When they, so the thing is, is we don't handle any permitting stuff at all. All permitting is done through CCNI.
So they pay, but they come to the town hall and pay whatever fees they need to pay, correct?
That is not correct.
So they pay CCNI?
Everything is done through CCNI. Remember, we had a last council meeting that we didn't want to have it set up where staff was doing everything.
Yeah. So CCNI remits payment and then gives 20% to the town hall?
That's correct.
Okay. So in essence, CCNI at this point can determine whatever threshold they want, because the town's not, not involved, and then once they get what they want, then they remit payment to the town.
Explain to me about what you mean by threshold.
So I, I couldn't believe that a small storage building would need a $500 architectural design to be approved, to be built. Once, I mean, they, they paid extra initially to have a, a set of drawings. And then they, then, you know, it took them six months to get this building done, because they had to find somebody to design the thing and have a stamped drawing on it. I'm just trying to figure out, it sounds like to me that CCNI has a set of rules that they go by that's profitable for them.
It sounds like to me that CCNI is following state laws.
Okay, can you, can you have that state law that specifically requires an architectural drawing for a 220-square-foot building?
I will have them provide...
Because, because it, it depends on the size of the building. There's a square footage involved in this, and they're below the threshold.
Okay.
So, so that's what I'm asking you, is, is provide that, because they came to town hall, spoke to you, and they were advised, yes, get your drawings.
I, I don't, I don't recall ever talking to anybody about this. The first I'd heard about this...
That's fine. They asked not to be mentioned. However, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not allowing CCNI to do things that are not necessary because it's profitable for them.
I, I don't...
I don't understand what you're, like, they have to do what's required by law and for their license with LLR.
You know, I don't, I don't, I'm like Jason, I don't understand, you know, why you have to have a architectural drawing. It's a, it's a storage building, no electrical, no plumbing, just a storage building.
We, we set our laws in this town a certain path, and I understand that state law says one thing, but our, our ordinances and, and stuff say another thing, too. There, there can be where, where we can say that this is, this is the limit at which we would like you to operate. But if we just let them operate however they want, you said to me just now that if they do whatever they do, that the customer pays them, and then we just get 20% after the fact.
That was the way the council wanted it, to have it said.
I, I don't think the council wanted zero to do with the policy and procedure in which they operate.
Willy-nilly.
I don't, I don't think that's what we talked about.
So the council agreed to what the permits are?
The council also, we also agreed to allow conversation on, on, on how much impact and, and how much, how much we're going to be strict. I mean, I can't remember exactly what was said, and I'll look it up, and I'll let you know. But we did say that we would have conversation on, on how strict we would be on things. We did talk about, you know, how we didn't want it to be so harsh, and, you know, like, your grass is 12 inches, and it should only be 11. You know, we, we talked about a lot of those things, because it was very stringent on RCI, with RCI. And now that it's CCNI, it seems like we're grasping for still what's most profitable. And that's what I'm concerned about. An extra set of drawings for a storage building eludes me.
Let me try to understand, how are, how is CC now profiting on the drawings?
Well, they get 80%. So if they, if they charge, if they charge because here's a permit, and you've got to have this, but they have to charge to come back, I mean, it's, every time they, every time they have to deal with a customer, then it's another charge.
But the fee is not based off of the plans that they pay for?
No, but it, it costs the citizens of the town more to go by the rules that they want to go by. That's where it costs the town citizens money, and it can become profitable if they have to make a return visit. Every inspection costs money.
Let me ask you something. If the police department starts pulling people over, and they are following state law, are they picking and choosing who they're pulling over? I mean, are...
Again, again, if, again, so if you can, if you can show me where the state law says pertaining to what square footage of a building, then I'll, I'll agree to that.
Yeah, why don't we just get the state law?
The first, the other thing is, too, if a police officer pulls somebody over, we can't, no law mandates that they must give a ticket. You cannot give a police officer a quota. It is their discretion whether it's necessary or not, and it should be the same with CCNI.
Okay.
It's their discretion, should be, whether they give a permit for a building.
Look at that, Patrick, and give us the email on it.
Yeah, this, this all could have been handled before the, the meeting, just ask the question.
Look, just look it up and give us the email on it, and, and let's, you know, we'll look at it, you know, like Jason said, next month or whatever, you know, when we, you find that out and email us, you know, what the law says and what our ordinance said, and we will go from there.
I thought, too, that there was no charge for replacing windows, and in here, there's, looks like there was a permit for replacing some windows. And I thought I saw someplace in here about someone replaced a door. And I thought I saw someplace in here about someone replaced a door. I would hate to think that I wanted to buy myself a new door and replace it and had to get a permit for that. I was trying to see where that was at. Repaired pour concrete sink, insulation won't be, insulation is bad. Replacement of exterior door for outdoor utility room, molding and paint surrounding the door, miscellaneous handiwork in addition to the door, replacement including a window blind, good grief, and curtain installation and kitchen cabinet drawer installation.
Were they made to get a permit for that? 231 Norwood Street?
I will check and see on that.
Because that is ridiculous. I didn't understand, and there again, a 190 Spring.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that-
That we said that we not were charging.
We agreed when we decided to move with the next inspection company that some of these small things would not be part of it. And then replacement of exterior door. I mean, I've seen quite a few exterior doors placed and no permit for those.
I don't think painting would be involved in that either.
No, painting wouldn't be. I'll find out more information on that.
You know, and too, I thought it was at the discretion of the council too, because they are a subcontractor to us.
You can't tell a subcontractor to not obey law.
What, no, no, the CCI, I'm not saying not to obey the law, but we can say what is, should be permitted and how much and what. That was our discretion.
For how much? Yes, council has set, the council has set the price for permitting on there.
And some of these frivolous things there again were discussed as far as the windows.
I'll have to get more information on what they-
What it sounds like, what it sounds like Patrick's telling us is although that CCI and I stood here and said that they would be lenient on some of the smaller things, they're still going to abide by the law and make you get a permit.
Yeah, there again, profitability.
I agree, there's been some complaints and there's some concerns, and we have to have a serious conversation with them, but this, this could all be answered through emails before the meeting. This isn't a workshop. We don't need to, we just need some answers and some state laws. I don't know why.
No, I think the public should know.
They can know, you can tell them.
The public's voiced their opinion to obviously more than one councilperson.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm just saying, we can, we have staff that we can get in.
We discussed this, and he'll be getting back with us on a lot of this stuff, so let's move along. Anything else on that one, Patrick?
No, the only thing left is chief's report, and if you have any questions, he's still here, I believe.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening, counsel. All right, our statistics for the last two months, in June, we had 211 calls for service, 1,742 officer-initiated events. In July, we had 199 calls for service, over 1,400 officer-initiated events. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank the Norfolk Southern Company and Mr. Connor Poe, who is their representative for community engagement. They awarded us just over $20,000 in the last month to purchase a side-by-side UTV for public safety use for their police department. It's something that we realized during our Hurricane Helene response and from some of the other emergencies we've had around that we really needed a vehicle of that type. And as we learned in Helene, we kind of have to take care of ourselves a little more so than we thought, so as opposed to relying on other agencies to always be available to help us. So I reached out, wrote a grant, sent it to those folks, and nearly instantaneously, they got back to us and provided those fees. So that's fantastic. We truly appreciate them. I've been talking to Norfolk Southern employees this week. They have a merger that is happening with Union Pacific, and they assure us that they intend to support our community fully going forward. So we really want to acknowledge them and appreciate them a lot. If anybody has any contacts with Norfolk Southern, please reach out to them and thank them. Get on your social media and thank them. We posted on our social media that we got it. If you want to repost it and share it to people, that would be awesome. The more publicity they can get, they certainly deserve it. One point I wanted to bring up that actually isn't on the agenda, that's popped up just in the last 24 hours. A couple of years ago, when you guys brought me on as police chief, the administrator and I worked together to create basically our salary scale. You guys got copies of this then. One of the things I have realized over the course of the last two years is the market doesn't reflect some of the things that we have as restrictions here. For example, and I'll provide this audit, counsel, between now and the next meeting, we have a scale here to hire prior certified officers, experienced officers, that only goes up to five years. For example, I have an officer right now that would like to come and work for the town that has 20 years of experience. So by this document that council agreed to, I can only bring him up to about the fifth year of experience level on salary. So I'm proposing, and I've talked with Administrator K, that anything over five years to have the permission to negotiate with that person and to find an appropriate level on our salary scale that matches their level of experience and training. Nothing else really would change about the scale other than just experienced officers is what I'm talking about. I have people that are interested in working here that have more than five years of experience, but I'm kind of restricted by this document that we talked about a couple of years ago. I think the market represents, if you get good talent, you need to negotiate with that talent and come to something that works for your agency. But most specifically, Mr. K is kind of the numbers guy in our partnership. And so long as, what I would propose to a potential hire or potential employee, so long as he's okay with it from a budget standpoint, I'd like for us to have the authority to do that and try to bring good people on. So I'll get all the information to you. Very simple changes, but very logical changes. You know, we have some spots we need to fill, and I have people that have good experience and training willing to do that, but I think we need to be able to kind of rise up and give them what they need to justify taking the leap to kind of work for our town. So we'll be talking about that more over the course of the month, but I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up of that's what's happening in negotiations I've been doing the last couple of days to bring some new employees on that are really excited about the possibility of joining our agency.
You said you'd bring some newest next month?
Well, I don't necessarily have to. I mean, we have a quorum. If you're okay with giving us permission to negotiate that way, as long as we stay within the budget, that's entirely-
That's been my point of view since day one with you, is it's your budget, and you know what your salary ranges are, you know what budget you have as far as salaries. As long as you can stay within your budget and you can balance it, I think it should be your discretion to offer and not offer and lower and, you know, higher on lower or higher on higher. I think it should be your discretion. You're the chief. It's on your shoulders regardless. And I think with a little bit of help, you know, if you need somebody to help, you know, like, go with the numbers, I think Mr. K can help you with that. But I still think it should be your discretion, you know, or at least amongst yourselves. We authorized a budget for you. I think you should be able to use it however you decide.
We were concerned, there are several line items here that are associated with a particular rank, so I kind of want to erase that. It's basically just, this is our salary scale, regardless of what rank you have, because for example, the person that has 20 years of experience is probably going to get paid more than our corporal who has four years of experience.
You did express back when that happened that that might be a concern in the future, is if you find somebody that has, you did express that before, and I knew at some point you'd probably get to this point, but I still think, I still think it's your budget, and I don't know that you need to ask us.
As long you're in your budget, you know, I don't think it can be a problem.
If you don't mind, what we're looking at is, I think when council passed the stepping grade system, there, we didn't really think that we would have, I didn't really think we would have, you know, we have the five-plus years of experience coming in, and, you know, someone comes in, and I think we've got some who are either 10 or 20 years plus experience. And if it's okay with council, that the chief and I can work at a negotiated rate for people who far exceed our current stepping grade system based on experience.
Yes, sir.
I think stepping grade is plain and clear. Your stepping grade system only encompasses five years, so, you know, if you stepped it up further to 20, where would you be? I think it makes sense. That's just a beginning intake at a lower level. That's all that is. I think anything, anything with more experience and years, of course, you're not going to hire them on as just a class one officer. It'll probably be somebody that might be sergeant or something of that sort.
Yes, sir.
You didn't really cover that in that table, so I think that's, like I said, your discretion. Unless there's any, you know, objections to that, I still, I feel like you don't need to ask the council to offer wage to an experienced officer.
Are you requesting a vote on this?
I would like to get something on the record, just because we've brought it up in a public meeting.
Do we have to amend the agenda to vote on something like this?
Yeah, we'd have to have amendment to agenda and all like that.
It would just be to request that, you know, for people who've got experience more than five years be, have the ability that the chief and I can negotiate but stay within the salary budget.
You want us to vote to tell you that you can give your officers?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion, we amend the agenda to discuss PD compensation?
Need a second.
Say that again?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to discuss PD compensation.
Need a second.
Go ahead.
Does, if you're anxious, does, will council have to approve anything above the-
Once we do this, we're going to have to approve the salary because it's going to be a higher, yeah. So whatever you offer, you'll have to come back to the council and then ask to approve that.
I understand what he's asking for about my office, he wants to be able to negotiate and hire and break there ultimately, so council.
Ultimately, it comes back to us to say, yes, we agree.
Actually, I don't because that makes me move at a 30-day time window, like every time I try to do something.
Like I said, I choose your budget. I think you're good.
Yeah.
Unless any other councilperson has objections to that, I think the chief should be able to use his budget salaries as he chooses. Is there any objections?
Is there any conflicts with our current-
There is conflict because it goes against your purchasing policy or your purchasing ordinance.
We're not purchasing the employee.
Any expenses or anything that's spent would be.
It's already a budget line item for salaries at the police department, so I don't see where that would be the same. Mr. Frost?
How can we do this where chief actually has negotiating power? If he offers something and they accept, and then he's like, hold, I have to go get approval? That's not going to work, so.
Well, I was wanting to clarify, I'm sure council is voting on, and-
Let me, one thing, one thing I've found, I have employees, that I have them as employees because I could do our process fast. As a one-man show, I could do everything it needed to give them an offer, to give them their testing and bring them on board, whereas other agencies, it takes 30 or 60 days. So it's truly important for me to be able to make those decisions and move whenever I need to move. So however we need to structure this, if we need to do anything at all, if he needs to retract his motion, speed matters.
I'll think again.
Your form only covers five years.
You know, a possible solution to that, I understand the speeding issue, not have to wait for a meeting. You know, the order required, ordinance change, whatever, but if he provides notice to the council unless someone objects and requests, you know, put a stay on, do we have a meeting? That's a possible solution.
Yeah, you could set it up so that, you know, once he's made that decision, he could send it out to council as long as no one said-
As long as no one has an objection?
Yeah.
If they think it was over, then if anyone has an objection, you're going to be in a hurry.
Why don't we do it that way? Yeah, we have to, you want to-
I can retract my motion.
So what you think about that, chief? That work, what do you think?
So long as it's timely, that's the only thing. And I can't imagine anybody's going to question, you know, what we work out. We're going to put a lot of thought into everything we do, but the speed of it matters at times. Because people that come out that are certified, that are candidates, they're like rock stars. They're being recruited left, right, and center, so we need to be able to come to the table quickly.
Okay. I think that's what's most important.
Okay, when you have a motion, do you want to retract it?
Yeah, I'll retract my motion.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll do it like that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
Okay, boarding commissions, meetings, consider appointment of Board of Zoning Appeals. We have someone that we want to-
Yeah, Jamie Cooper's come forward to fill the vacant BZA position. He's had to resign from the Construction Board of Appeals in order to do that, so I make a motion to add Jamie Cooper to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Need a second. Need a second. Anybody? Motion made in second to appoint Jamie Cooper as to fill the vacancy in the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any questions?
Yes, who is James Cooper?
He's present tonight, but what descriptor, he holds a position on the Construction Board of Appeals right now. He's a resident of-
I'm not understanding what you're saying.
What's the Construction Board of Appeals? What's Construction Board of Appeals?
What?
We have a Construction Board of Appeals?
You have a Construction Board of Appeals and Adjustments.
Oh.
At your request, actually.
Yeah. Who's all on that?
There's five people that are on it.
Which ones?
There's five people on the Construction Board of Appeals and Adjustments. I'll have to get that to you.
How many do they need for a quorum?
Say the names.
I can come up with some of them, but they've just gotten on there. I'm trying to remember who it is.
So this James Cooper you're saying is a member?
Thank you.
That's the, that's the construction?
Construction Board of Appeals and-
They oversee appeals to building permits. What, my question is, with a new vac, that board's not filled, but it has a quorum? What's the quorum on that? Is it four?
The quorum for-
Construction.
It would just be three, because there's only five members, I believe, that are on there.
How many members are required? Is it filled? I thought it was-
Everything's all been filled as far as I know.
Okay, good. So they can still function, not that there's any pending?
They can still function, yes.
Okay.
And this is where he comes from? Is that what I'm understanding?
Right.
He comes from the Construction Board of Appeals.
He would have to formally resign from that to be placed on this other-
What do you require for formal resignation? He's, I nominated him, he's formally resigned to me.
We can approve, we can approve him based on a future resignation, and if he doesn't, then we can just pick somebody else next time?
Yeah, he can do that in the next meeting or whatever.
No, it'd be good to go ahead and get somebody on there, because like Mr. Erickson stated, we only had four at the last meeting.
Yeah, BZA is far more important to keep filled.
Okay.
Can I do a formal resignation from the zoning Board of Appeals right now?
You could come up here and state it right here.
Yes, come on up.
James, I didn't know that was you, Jamie.
Hi, Jamie Cooper, 350 Sunset.
I didn't know that was you.[1680.72] I didn't say Jamie, I didn't know that was you, I know you got Jamie, not James.
Yeah, but I would like to resign from the zoning board, or from the Construction Board of Appeals. That way I can go on the zoning board.
We accept your resignation.
We accept, anybody big?
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your resignation.
Okay, we got a motion in the second to appoint Jamie as in the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor, all opposed, okay? All right, no unfinished business and, okay, new business, consider a memorandum of agreement with South Carolina Juvenile Justice Juvenile Detention Complex.
This is something that council approves every year and.
I approve the memorandum, make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve, all in favor, all opposed, okay? Okay, consider the resolution to support and impact fund problem solver grant application.
So this used to be called the, there was another name for it, the MASC used to have it, it was the Hometown Grant. And when I was going through potential projects with Naomi Reed, she suggested that we apply for this to cover the cost of engineering work of the amphitheater. Engineering work is one of the few things that that most grants don't cover, and so because of the fact that this does, she thought it would be something that we should definitely apply for and be considered for. It's a $25,000.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to support the Impact Fund Problem Solver Grant.
I second.
Motion made in second, and approves the support of an impact problem solver grant. Any questions? All in favor, all opposed? Consider the update, update to the town employee handbook.
This is something that I had been working on kind of behind the scenes for a while, actually, I hate to admit how long I've been working on it, but it actually came up, if I'm not mistaken, back in September, October of '22. That councilperson Sexton wanted some update to the handbook, and so have been working on making things, just updating it and adding things that make more sense to the town that are more applicable. I put on here a, what you have on the screen here is the changes, it'll be going from the the last one that was approved back in 2020 to the one now in 2025. It's got a table of contents now, has, the biggest things on here is vehicle and equipment policy. There should be, there's also a section there, the, some town employees have credit cards that they can use, not credit cards, purchase cards, and it states how those are supposed to work. The leave cash out policy, so employees can, some employees can get as much as four weeks based on their tenure with the town, and if they choose not to take those weeks, they can be paid out. And that more explicitly explains that, there's the remote work policy, which is used in very, very limited situations, social media, which just means just be aware of what you're saying that's on there as you identify as somebody who is working with the town. And information on resignation process, workplace guidelines, and then recently added on information about the Family Medical Leave Act, which the town appellate has to abide by.
Any questions?
I have questions about number five, I wanna understand the remote work policy.
It is.
And who would be using that?
It'll be, it's rarely used, and if it would be used, it would be used by certain employees at Town Hall. There are, I don't wanna go too much into this, but if we have, you know, employees that, say, schools called out, and they need to be at home, that they have the ability to, you know, they could just go home and just take the day off, but we may be, we can set it up in such a way that they can bring their laptop home and be able to work from home as long as they are still accessible to the town. However, it has to be that somebody has to be here from Town Hall, either the clerk or the assistant clerk must be here to interact with the public.
You had a question?
Oh, yes, I had a question regarding the per diem allowance, page 18 of 37. Says for travel that exceeds one overnight stay, a modest per diem may be granted at the discretion of the town administrator. Request must be submitted and approved in advance of travel, and I don't understand why we just cannot go ahead and have a set per diem? So there's no confusion as to why Sally got paid this and maybe Jim got paid that. I think it should be a set amount, just like where I work at, we have a set amount of a per diem, and you don't go over that.
No, no, and and we would have a set amount, it would not be like someone's getting five and someone's getting 10 or something like that, it was mainly so that, and this is just my personal preference on there, you know, you you go to these things and everyone's gotta eat. I mean, it shouldn't be necessarily something that everyone's getting paid to do what they already do, it it has nothing to do with the amount, the amount would be the same for everybody.
And, and and it should be listed in the handbook is what I'm saying as well, so there's no confusion, and as we have ours, it's it's set, so. An employee reads that, they understand if they go out of town, they stay out of town for training or whatever, they have this amount of money that they can spend per day, no more, they spend less fine, but they're not gonna get paid for anything more, and that's what they're reimbursed at. But it is listed so it, so they can read it and it is understood by all. So I I think it should be listed in the handbook, whatever, you know, the maximum is that will be paid.
The only thing would be is if it goes up or down based on inflation, so if you could set it like based on whatever the IRS has or whatever state law is, I mean, I have no problem with something like that.
Yes, well.
But I would hate to have it on there and then it it fluctuates based on inflation.
So so what would you be paying them for, eating?
Yes.
Okay, so how much food can somebody eat per day? Okay, so there's inflation, you know, we we have our set, ours is set at $75, which is, I think, is a lot, but if they wanna go, right on, but if you, but if they go to Longhorn or somewhere like that, you can sit down and eat you a pretty good bit for supper, and then you got your dinner and your breakfast in there. But it's high enough if you wanna go eat hound hog, and it's covered, you know, either way, but it it is a set amount, yeah.
This is just my my personal preference on there, and y'all tell me however y'all wanna do this. I have an issue with paying people to do what they're already gonna do, if they're at home, you're gonna eat, if you're on vacation, you're gonna eat. Now, I completely get it if you are on a work function dinner and you are intergate, interacting with other colleagues, and you're learning about stuff, about what you're there for, absolutely.
Okay, but then what what do you think, whatever, what do you think that should be, but whatever it is, it should be listed in the handbook so everybody knows?
What we have it on is, the the way I've got it set up on here is if you go to a conference and you have dinner with several colleagues, I'm giving an example, Tony never goes, but Tony, so if, you know, our clerk ends up having dinner with someone from a different town, that she comes back and she says it was X number of dollars, then she gets reimbursed for that X number of dollars. That's what it ends up being, it's not a, we give you money upfront, it's a reimbursement once you come back.
No, we don't give it money upfront either, you bring me your receipt, if you don't have a receipt, sorry buddy, you're not getting paid for it, but that, what I'm saying, oh, my voice, but what I'm saying is the maximum of what you will not pay should be listed, you'll say, I'm not paying you more, no more than 50 bucks, well, I know I can't eat no more than 50 bucks today, or no more than $30 today. That should be listed on here as a guideline to them, instead of them just coming and saying, you know, because today you might say 30, tomorrow it might be 40, you know, it should be listed in the handbook, the maximum of what you would pay for them to eat.
It should just be a set rate.
Yeah.
Not, not a minimum, maximum, just to stand your rate, $35 a day or.
If they only spent $10 at lunch, I reimburse you that $10 when you bring me your receipt.
And if, it's what I'm looking at is if you're, if you're spending $10 at lunch and you're interacting with other people that are there, it's not just, I spent $10 for lunch, I went up in my room and went and had lunch, my thing is, is when you're at home, we don't reimburse you for.
You're you're talking about re- reimbursing expenses now as opposed to per diem, per diem is a set rate that's paid for an overnight venture.
Yeah.
If you're talking about paying for somebody's dinner or your own dinner, so that's, that sounds like a reimbursement to an expense.
Yeah.
That's totally different things, so a per diem, there should just be a set number, this is what it is, no matter what.
Here, yeah.
If there's gonna be expense, then it has to be approved by you or something of that sort, but per diem and expenses is totally different things. If you send Travis out of town, and you tell Travis his per diem is 20, but Tony's is 35, you'll have a lawsuit, potentially.
Oh, I agree.
Every employee is equal, so set the per diem to be what the per diem needs to be.
Yeah, so they all.
Singular, singular number, and that's it.
And we just change it to a reimbursement then?
No, because that.
That's an expense, not a per diem.
And, yeah, reimbursement is, is expensive.
So we set the per diem at no more than $50 on there for reimbursement when they come back.
For expenses?
For food expenses.
What, that's, okay.
Per diem, it doesn't matter what you use it.
Patrick, what I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is, is it needs to be a set rate, not a high or a low, it needs to be a singular set rate. Most companies do 20 to 35 to $40 an hour, if you're paying for your hotel, it could be 150, just a set rate, if it's called per diem, it needs to be same, and the reason for that is because every employee of a company, and this is a company, needs to have the same per diem. It can't be different for the administrator as opposed to the clerk, it has to be the same per diem. Now, if you have a different expense report, that's completely different, but a per diem has to be the same for all employees of any company, or municipality for that matter.
When someone goes out of town, do y'all pay for their hotel?
Yes.
Okay, so you pay for their.
That's lodging.
Yeah.
We pay for their lodging, we pay for their their mileage once they get back, and any of their conference cost on there, and, you know, that's it, I mean, what's.
Well, then that's much, then you should put that in there instead of saying per diem.
But that's not, I can't set it as a set amount because it will vary based off the hotel they end up going to.
Well, yes, the hotel and stuff will, depending on where you go, but not what they spend during the day, the 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 travel isn't gonna change, because you'll pay that to whatever federal or IRS states, which is right now, I think it's .70 per mile. You know, so the only thing pretty much you're gonna be paying out is the food. So if you're already paying overnight, yeah, that's gonna, that, then I would just put reimbursement.
Nothing.
Instead of the, a per diem.
The per diem typically is, I've got this much to spend while I'm at this.
Yes.
Conference on there, the problem that I get into on there is, and this is just like I said, it's a, you know, this is how I see it, is I'm gonna go to a conference and I'm gonna have lunch, I'm gonna pay for my lunch personally, because of the fact that I eat lunch, I'm a human and I need food. Versus if I'm gonna have a meeting with someone who's there and but it's gonna be.
And that's being reimbursed.
That's an expense, that's a, that's an expense.
That doesn't, yeah, that doesn't matter, you can put a per diem, you know, you give him $50 a day for, he can do anything he wants to with it.
Yeah.
And, you know, he can buy lunch, he can buy supper, he can do do without, you know.
If it's, if it's less than that, whatever, but I think it should be a set amount, okay, a set amount.
Purchasing, purchasing lunch or dinner for potential clients, that's an expense, that's a business expense.
With, I mean, if if an employee who's having, you know, lunch or dinner with another clerk, court clerk, whatever, in another place, and it's kind of what I call work-related kind of thing, it should be.
Let's say, for example, if you and Jennifer go to lunch, you pay for yours, she pays for hers, if you guys are out of town, that's part of your per diem.
Right.
Take it out of that, if you guys all go sit down with the town of Seneca, and and you wanna pick up a tab for Seneca because you think they're gonna come here and help do something, and you think that's a a good business decision to buy them dinner, then that's an expense.
Yeah, it's a business lunch and it comes off.
If you do something singular and personal, then that's, that's per diem.
And that's what I.
That's your own money.
Right, I I guess what I'm suggesting is that there's not a per diem then at that point.
What?
I don't know why it's just so complicated, it shouldn't be.
He's trying to save taxpayer dollars.
Let's uh, let's table this for now, and then we'll get back to it in another council meeting, I think, I think we can probably do this in emails.
Absolutely.
And and I think that's fine, this is taking too long.
Sure. Okay, move along to the purchase of the replacement chipper truck.
Sent out the email regarding the, or the memo regarding the chipper truck, as you can see on here, this chipper truck is very old, it's, it's past due, a lot of work on there, I'm just giving you the option, as of right now, we've got a estimate, it's 4,000 and some change on there, it's about 5,000, but about 4,400 bucks in repairs that needs to be done in terms of the brakes for us to be able to use it. Right now, it's parked up at the, the armory, I wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to, to look at upgrading and looking at something, just going ahead and and just buying something new, because it will continue to have issues that are on there. I don't remember, and I wasn't here when it was purchased back in '17, but.
None of us were here.
Sir?
Was any of us here? Truck's been here a while.
$5,000 for brakes is is high to me, and there's work that needs to be done out there, the majority of the cost for it is not labor, it's for parts, and so it's a lot of money to put into a vehicle that's 35 years old, that I wanted to give you the opportunity to look at something else. Now, I don't know exactly what that is, I've given you some options that are on here, what I'm suggesting is that a committee of three council members be, meet with me and look at various options that are on there between now and the next council meeting, to be able to get something to get back out on the road, because as of right now, the town's not picking up limbs, and to get a a top-end amount of ability to spend to move forward on something.
I'm okay with getting a new truck, and I'm okay with forming a committee, but I'm not okay with delegating authority to a committee to make a decision.
Delegating authority, what?
I think that's against our ordinances and.
Delegating authority, I'm sorry.
Delegate full authority to this committee to approve and initiate the purchase prior to the next council meeting, I think that's, that's overreaching what our rules and ordinances state.
What would you like, what did you like it today?
I I'm okay with looking for another truck and having some people look for it. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good option to just say, go ahead and allow these council members to buy it.
Well, why can't it just be, I mean, before when we've done this, it's just been a decision as a council, as a whole, why did there need to be a committee?
You can wait another month if you want to, I'm just saying you're having another month that it's just out of service, nothing's been picked up.
I I just don't wanna start the process of delegating authority to committees to spend $70,000 without getting full approval.
They gonna bring it back, that information, they gonna bring it back to us anyway, right?
What I'm requesting on there is that council approve up to amount, a $70,000 top-end amount, and that they're able to move forward on there. Now, if council wants to, you can say, you're not gonna do that, you wanna go ahead and just spend the the dollars on repair of the existing vehicle and kick the can down the road for another six months.
Come on, Patrick.
What would we do with the old vehicle if we purchased a new one?
It would have to be put up on gov deals, since it's currently not movable, it would have to be transported to wherever we end up putting it on gov deals, the last place we ended up doing this was down in Columbia, I believe, for the PD vehicles.
Can we get an option on a private subcontractor doing one or two pickups?
We could look.
In the meantime, or permanently?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we can look at, I think the town ended up spending about $11,700 the last time we ended up doing a townwide pickup.
That was with a few months of buildup, right, that wasn't like.
Sir?
That was, that was, we were a few months behind when we did that, several months, a year, how far behind were we?
It was like six, eight months.
We were probably close to a year then.
I I could not tell you how far behind it is, you know, it's. Um, you know, it's, the, the liming, the limb is something that's kind of done. It's the last two days, Thursday and Friday. Uh, sometimes, uh, based on weather, uh, trash can end up merging it into some of Thursday. Uh, if typically our days off end up being, or the, um, holidays end up being on Mondays. Um, so, um, we end up getting one, possibly two days of limb pickup.
So this is, we're talking about $70,000 for a vehicle used four times a month and it's important, we, we need this service.
Now, the other option that I have put on there, uh, it was suggested by the company I've been talking to out of Georgia, um, called a switch and go. Um, and I, I am not familiar with the switch and go. I'm not sure if Mr. Wright's more familiar with something like this. Uh, but they have different bodies, uh, that you can put on the backup. Uh, so you can end up having a flatbed, a dumpster body, a, um, a dump body for, uh, rock and soil on there. They've also got ones that are like for up north for, now, won't have to use it in Paclit, uh, but for salt spreaders.
Is this priced just for the base vehicle that we have to purchase and add on?
So the cost on here that I've got at the $76,000 is the cost for the, uh, vehicle and the chipper body.
Oh, gotcha.
Uh, and then if you wanted to add that dumpster body at a different time, that would be a 5,295 or the, the other dump body for eight grand on there. And then they've got a lot of different types of stuff. One option that, uh, they considered for us was the, uh, the dumpster body. So you like, you have a, uh, there's roll-off containers that are used at the, um, bulk waste day. Those are either 40 or 80 yard dumpsters. Um, the most this would be is a 20 yard. Um, it may be something that the town could, um, rent out to construction projects. Um, but of course, we would have to have multiple of those. There are options that are on there. You can go ahead and go with a fixed body, um, and go ahead. These are actual prices that were given to me, um, by this company. Um, the $70,000 option as well as the 65.9 option. Uh, and those are for, um, to have a, um, the F-750 with the, uh, a chipper, uh, body on the, um, the back of it.
I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to, to have a committee review, to review these vehicles and, and, and if, if we have three council members that are willing to take their time to review all this and make a sound decision, I don't see why I'd have a problem approving, uh, whatever decision a, a, a team of three would, would come up with. I, I wouldn't have an issue with that. Bring it to the next council meeting and, or, or, either way. I, I think that's a good idea and I think it's something we should move forward with. Um, I like the idea of the, the switch body. Um, the only downfall of that is it just sounds like there's a lot of purchasing of other components. A simple bed, you know, chipper bed, it sounds like the most feasible option to me because that's what we'll predominantly use it for, no matter what.
No, we got, you know, what Mr. Williams had brought up a point, you know, it's, to spend $70,000 on a, on a vehicle that use, gets used at most twice a week, um, that if you have other options to be able to do with that.
That's right. Yeah. That's why I say, I, I like the idea of that. Um, you know, I, I, I feel like they, they make chipper trucks that also have the, um, bucket. You know, you got to raise the bucket to dump it, but they make chipper trucks like that too. I mean, that's something feasible, hanging Christmas lights, trimming trees in the near future. You know, Gaffney has one, the city of Gaffney has one. It's just one single bucket truck and it's got, I don't, I think there's a chipper bed too, but I'm not real sure. But they, they hang the Christmas lights with it and they use it quite a bit.
Does it, that'd be great if, if we could end up getting a bucket truck as another switching go, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, so the, the bucket truck is simply, they, they pull the chipper behind them. It's like a, the company that trims cheese for the power lines. It's, it's a bucket truck and a chipper box that tag, tag alongs a chipper. They drop the chipper, they go dump the truck and then they come back, pick the chipper back up, they still continue to trim.
I'll ask them about that, um.
The only problem with that bucket truck would be, it'd be limited on alleyways and such.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, how about, uh, any three volunteers? Anybody volunteer for this? Who have time to volunteer? Who's going to give their time up, you know, let's hear it.
Uh, I will if you need someone.
Yeah, I can do it too. You know, we got two of us anyway, you need one.
I, I think we got plenty of online meetings. We could set up Zoom calls and talk about quite a bit.
You mind being on that?
I wouldn't mind being on it either.
Okay.
Okay.
Good deal, Jason.
All right. I conclude that.
I conclude that.
Okay. All right, uh, comments? Mr. Star?
No comment. I have a comment. Went to the conference in Hilton Head. And I wanted to go on record that next conference is makes about the second and third one. I want the town of Paclit to win an award. Okay. We need to complete some projects, some type of beautification. Something needs to take place. You know, I'm going and I, in all these little towns, I think Jonesville was one year, Welford. I'm like, hey, we're just as good. We got enough going on that we can make something shake. So I would like our name to be in the basket, Patrick. And I want to go up and receive the award.
You going to go up on stage?
Yeah, I will.
I believe, is the next one in Greenville?
Yeah.
Okay, be even better.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to work out our per diem by that time too.
I have two things. Two things for District Four. I don't know if anyone else noticed, but one of our blighted mobile home trailers on McDowell Street has been removed, cleaned up. We have someone that moved to the town that's working on the site. Looks like they're building the home. I, I met the lady, very nice. So that's, that's improvements. It's, it's something, um, hopefully if you get the chance to stop by and meet the lady, her name's Rosalyn, um, please be welcoming. The other thing is, uh, we have brand new business in town. Uh, dog groomer, hair of the dog grooming, um, on Main Street. If you get a chance, offer some encouragement. Welcome that person, they're from out of town as well. These are good things for Paclit, that's all I have.
Would you take something?
Yes, I do have a comment. This. Yeah, forgive me because my printer went in front out, so I've got to read it off my, my phone. But this is in regards to the, um, and jumps off of the social media, media policy that, um, has been updated in the employee handbook that is expanded to address personal social media conduct while identifying as a town employee. And I have talked about this and have commented on this a couple of times here, but it, um, for whatever reason, it just continues. And this is a thought here. Um, regarding the employee handbook revisions and the policies that within that we discussed here regarding the town of Paclit employees that they have to adhere to and regarding the social media policy, that they have to adhere to, those same policies and then some should apply to the council as well as we are a representative. And I want to read the definition of a representative. Representative generally means a person or thing that stands for, speaks for, or acts on behalf of another person or group. This can be in various contexts, including political representation, legal representation, or as an agent or someone else. It can also refer to something that is typical or characteristic of a larger group. I will be using the word representative in a political representation. Political representation is a member of a legislative body who is elected to represent a specific area or group of people. They are chosen to voice the concerns and interests of their constituents, constituents in government. A person who, a representative is also a person who has been chosen to act or make decisions on behalf of another person or another group. With that said, we are a representative of our citizens as we are elected by them and are representatives of our policies, procedures, and ordinances of the town of Paclit as we are also the body that makes and applies them to our citizens. We are also representative of the code of conduct that each council member agreed to and sworn to when elected and sworn into council. That same representative that also applies to those who serve on committees under the town of Paclit as well as clubs and other meetings that are associated with the town of Paclit. And I say all this and it should really go without saying, however, I was made aware of a social media post regarding a council person addressing another council person in an unfailable way. I personally was offended and embarrassed at the venomous language used as a town of Paclit councilman. It is quite the shame and the disgrace of not having any integrity, which means having a strong and consistent moral compass, always choosing to do what is right even when it's difficult or when no one is watching. Whatsoever your town that has a elective, whatsoever your town that as an elective councilman, you would berate and use ugly language toward another councilman person on social media and then to have the audacity to acknowledge it and find their own statement hilarious when it was reposted by another citizen. And it was reposted by another citizen because to show that, you know, no wonder Paclit is the laughing stock of Spartanburg County because we have this kind of behavior and language and ugliness that is common from this council. I, as a member of this council and a representative of the citizens of Paclit and the town of Paclit and as a private citizen, find such selfish behavior inexcusable and distasteful for a council person to act and behave in such a manner on social media where it suits this person, his personal agenda instead of behaving in a professional manner as one would sitting in a public forum as a council person who represents his citizens and the town of Paclit should know better. Social media reaches far and wide and as a council person who represents the town should know and recognize the impact that would have on the town. Not no more than several meetings ago was this very issue me, mentioned by Mr. K, the town administrator, and was not just mentioned to the council but to the citizens as well. Now, what we say and put out on social media reflects and affects the town as a whole and as we and as a town are perceived by others looking at us through all avenues of social media. As our freedom of speech is guaranteed by the First Amendment, which allows us to speak freely our opinions and yes, to offend at our pleasure, there is nothing legal or constitutional that requires, an individual use these freedoms wisely. Let a man speak and he'll show you his true character. There is a time and place for everything. Social media, in my opinion, is not a place to air your grievance, especially when a position held as a councilman and representative of your town and citizen. It speaks volume, choose wisely, do better and be better.
So yeah. Okay, Jason?
I, I think enough's been said tonight. I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Okay, I'd like to have something, yeah, I'd like to mention, went to one Spartanburg meeting the other day, uh, and we got, uh, there, we got in their magazine, gets to, uh, over, uh, it gets to thousands and thousands of, uh, uh, CEOs around, uh, Spartanburg and probably other areas. And we have two real good articles in there. One, you know, one is advertising, we got advertisement in there. And on page 28, we have a good article, uh, on there. And if you'd like to, you know, you know, drop by and get a, a one Spartanburg magazine, you see it, pick it up, we're in there. Uh, we get good, good, uh, oh, you know, press on that and we'd be glad to get more press. And, uh, and if we continue this year, we, we will. And if, uh, we'll, uh, stay off the media and, uh, and, uh, and say positive things about us instead of negative things that we have online. So, uh, if, uh, we do that, you know, we'll, we'll grow this town. We'll, we'll have other people looking at us. This magazine, like I said, will be seen from, uh, for thousands of CEOs in Spartanburg County. It goes out to all the CEOs and all. So look at those, uh, you know, those articles and it's a real good, good articles. You know, we can, uh, we can see this. If we go positively, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll be positive. So that's all I had.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and second to adjourn. All in favor? Just a move.